And I'm like, we'll be the judge of that.
So you still have a full board? Are you good?
We've got no, we're not good. Dan Mullen, Reverend Mullen, he's gonna be on, he's already on the board.
Doesn't that coffee keep you up? No?
I wonder if Duncan will.
He can't be on this board as well.
All day.
Chad Bell, it's a cough to parts on him.
I love coffee. I just couldn't do it after this late for sure anymore.
I'm also sure I'll get there too.
You know, we've got Linda, we've got Mary Ellen, we've got Brian, they're steady in.
So you need two?
We could use two.
Yeah, okay.
I've been asking Brian how we're gonna go about doing this and I don't know.
Well, we do an application process, you know, we use the city website and we promote out. And technically, they're appointed by.
The mayor.
So, you know, I think if nobody object, well, can't ask now, it's not on the agenda. I don't think anyone would have.
Whatever it is.
I don't think anyone would object if we put it under the solicitation notice for the other volunteer positions.
No, no. Yeah, you're the, you're the pointer.
Could we tentatively put the library on there too? Because we're looking for a board member to ourselves. I'll check in with Nancy to make sure she wants to do that, but. Somewhere we can check in.
One or two positions?
I want us, I think it's two, but only one from Berry City, if I'm remembering correctly. But again, I'll check, I'll check with Nancy.
Is this a weather protection thing? It looks, it's just looking inside of your, inside of your mask.
No, and, and people think like the, the hair has been longer or the beard's been different, but this time last year? I mean, I have a picture, it's in the packet.
It is in the packet.
It's a winter thing. It's, yeah.
This is deer hunting thing I've ever left.
So have you hit record, sir?
Yeah, it's automatically.
I'm muted, that's like two minutes ago.
And then one, two, three, six, and Mel is not going to be in attendance.
Okay, then we're all accounted for.
Okay, so it is 7:01. I will call the meeting to order. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Counsel, I'm just noting that the old business items, B and C, we're gonna put after 9A. So we can try to get through the appointments and then the public hearing.
Did you just call for adjustments?
Yes.
Sorry, yeah, I have an adjustment. I will defer the capital improvements RFP till next week. I just haven't finished it yet.
Okay, and that was under 3D.
Yeah.
Differed. Okay. Any other adjustments? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Some moves.
Second.
Okay, and just under discussion noting that item 3D was just removed, so this is items A, B, C, and E. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed, nay? Thank you very much. Moving on to item four, this is the city clerk and treasurer's report. Carol?
Hi there.
Hi, how you doing?
Peachy. How about you?
If you're peachy, pineapple.
Um, the, because council approved the, the warning at last week's meeting, I've been working with the printers to get the ballots laid out and proofed. So we now have sample ballots posted on the city website. People can go look at those. We will have the ballots by next week, by the ninth, which is the statutory deadline. And those that have been requested, that have requested ballots be mailed, those will be out in the mail by the end of next week. We're at right around 500 requests at this stage of the game, a little over, I think. Requests continue to come in. So I encourage people that if they would like to receive a ballot in the mail, give us a call and we will mail them to you. And so that's on the election. Secondly, the, just a continuing reminder that third quarter property taxes are due by the 50th, which is two weeks from today, so toss them in the mail, toss them in the drop box, stop by the clerk's office, pay them online. If you pay them online, there is a service charge, just a reminder of that. Though it's amazing how much of an increase over the past 18 months we've seen in use of our online payment option as we expanded it when city hall was closed down. And a lot of people have moved into that realm. The nice thing is that if you use a credit card, there's a 3% service charge. But if you do an e-check, you know, have it automatically debited from your banking account, it's a flat $2.50 service charge. So particularly if you're paying a, a property tax bill, that's a, a pretty reasonable service charge. And a lot of people are going that route. So, uh, dog licenses are available in the clerk's office. All dogs are to be licensed by the first of April. Write that down. Oh, so license your dog. Council Booton's dog is licensed, so he's good to go. Um, have you gotten your dog yet, Councilor Hammer?
No, it's still, it's still in the works. Fence first, fence first.
Smart.
Can I, Carol, can I follow up on your comment about my dog being licensed? So I didn't have any cash that day, so I actually paid for it in the office online.
Yep, you can do that. It's a little odd, but you can do that.
Did you do it from your phone?
I did.
Yeah, look at that.
We weren't going to trust him to send us the money, so. Um, the, under liquor control, I just want to let you know that we did mail out the annual renewal licenses today. All liquor licenses expire the end of April, so they've gone out in the, the mail to begin the process. This will, fingers crossed, be the last year we actually are dealing with hard copies. The Division of Liquor Control is moving into an online portal where people will, you know, log in to do their renewal, will log in to issue our approvals. Everything will be done, even the final license will be done electronically. The, the license holder will ultimately have to print out a hard copy because they have to have it posted in their establishment. But, but the hope is that we're, they're, they're beta testing a, a system right now. So hopefully we'll have that in place for next year, so that's all I have.
Okay, any questions for the clerk or treasurer? Hearing and seeing none, we just covered liquor control. And that means we move on to the city manager's report.
Yeah, I have three or four items to add to the manager written report that I provided the council. The first is just, at last week's meeting, there was some question as to whether the appointment candidates had been notified. I checked with, I thought they had. I checked with Jody the next day and she had, she forwarded to me the email that went out to all of the candidates. So all of the candidates were notified in writing in advance of the meeting. Just a note, I had this in the packet, but there's a, be a tour of the Wheelock Building next Tuesday at 6 o'clock before the regular meeting. Attending, Tracy Lewis will be attending, Tony Campos, and I spoke with Tom Bowson yesterday. And he will be there and he will try to have the consultants who are working on the assessment attend as well. So you might be able to ask them questions if you have any questions, but they'll be there as well. I have arranged for a tour of the new public, People's Health and Welfare Clinic over in the old Berry Granite Association office. It's on Friday, the 18th at noon. And Dan Barlow says any counselors who'd like to attend are welcome to attend, so. The 18th at noon. And then the last item, and actually with Bill in the audience, I turned to Bill who might just give, at least for the public's benefit, an update on the storm that's coming in starting Wednesday night, Thursday, and Friday. So if you want to just speak to the precautions you folks are, or the approach that you're taking.
So as Bill's coming up, do you have anything else that you're gonna add under your report?
No, that's it.
Okay, so I'll note then this is under visitors communication. And Bill?
So for the record, my name is Bill Ahern, Director of Public Works for the city. We, we're gonna take a slightly different approach on this storm because of its duration. So the storm looks like it, it actually will have a 30 to 32 hour duration, with the first four or five hours being a wet precipitation rather than truly snow. But we're expecting that because we only have 12 folks in streets, and we are gonna be borrowing folks from the water department and the sewer department as well, that we're gonna push up against what we call as our, our target maximum of 16 hour days for our employees. So in order to keep running all the vehicles on all routes, we typically split the staff into two, two operating teams. And we'll be doing that probably late Wednesday and carrying that through midday Friday. So we'll be running two different teams, running the, the five different plow routes that we, we run. Because it's snow will accumulate really rapidly in the middle of the storm. It's, it's looking like in particular late Thursday afternoon until Friday mornings. If we put salt down and we're accumulating snow at over about two inches an hour, with the duration it takes to go around a loop, we can guarantee you that that salt will not be a wet puddle. It's gonna turn into literally four to five inches of slush on the center line of the road. And that's actually more hazardous because vehicles turning through it, it, the slush plugs the tire. And that, both tires on the driver's side are not really going to contribute greatly to directional stability or stopping. So we will be using a sand mix from roughly sometime after 6:00 PM on Thursday right through Friday morning. And then the, the way that the weather looks, we'll switch back to a, a standard salt and sand mix Friday afternoon. But it will mean that there's gonna be snow on, on the streets. And the folks are really gonna have to pay attention to their driving and drive more slowly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
So just kind of related, since we are going to have a large snow event. There was a resident that asked about Elmwood Cemetery and how the kids use the hill there to slide. But when they get down to the bottom of the hill, they can sometimes shoot across. So the question was, as you're taking some of this snow, because there's gonna be a large amount of it, is there any ability to set up any kind of berm or area so that those sliders don't slide down to the street?
So I, I will touch base with the foreman. If we were doing a snow removal, I would tell you certainly we could, we could arrange to do that because it would just mean bringing, you know, four or five truckloads up there, dumping it, pushing it around with a loader. But we'll see if there's a way to do that with some of the snow that we're plowing in this storm. But I, I suspect that we can. I just shouldn't promise it until I have a chance to confirm with the staff that it can be done.
Yeah, I went up and took a look on Saturday. There, I, I think part of the, part of the problem, if you will, is that just with the, because the snowstorm that we last had was so long ago, I mean, with a lot of compression of the snow and, and/or melting, the, the, actually the windrows that the cemetery crew would, would naturally have along the side of that road pretty much disappeared. And then I think with some of the warmer and cooling weather, it, it turns part of it to a glaze. So I think at least after an initial storm, just the plowing of the road itself by the cemetery crew will put a berm in there. And then Bill can certainly add to it if they're looking for a place to dump some snow.
Counselor Booton had his hand up first, so I just wanted to see if he put it back down. I don't know if he still has.
Did you have something for?
Well, yeah, yeah, I mean, Bill left the, but I was just gonna ask him to, to give us an idea about the sidewalks and so that we can set expectations for that as well. Because I, you know, it's a lot of work for the sidewalks and some people may not know that it's not something that, that's not priority. I, I mean, I, oh wow, that's not what I meant by that comment. And, you know, we, we prioritize our streets first, I assume. Is that correct, Bill?
So, so we actually run sidewalks concurrent with the street operations. We have, we have several employees that don't hold commercial drivers licenses. And so they can't be in the larger trucks. And we typically use them to operate either Bobcats or, or Kermit. And Kermit has been a huge addition to the fleet because he's three times faster than a Bobcat. And so literally, we're able to do more sidewalks because of that purchase of the sidewalk machine. I would expect that we will lose control of the sidewalks overnight Thursday. I expect us to keep them open, probably through at least close of business on Thursday. And then with any luck, we'll recover them by 11:00 on Friday morning as the storm wanes. We'll have folks out, but the sidewalks themselves, we're typically running two, two sidewalk plows. And very similar time, we're typically done the main routes in about three and a half to four hours, but we don't finish all routes until almost an eight hour timeframe has elapsed. And we will, we will pull off some of the secondary sidewalk routes. So some of the more residential sidewalks that we do may not get done until Friday. But we'll maintain the downtown in the pass to and from the schools.
Counsel, was it that?
All right, thank.
Um, yeah, this is something I hadn't thought of before. What's the protocol for closing city hall during a major snow event?
So are you talking about council meetings? Are you talking about?
For like staff? Or is there like, I don't know, I just?
We've always usually toughed it out. I, I don't, there may have been one time that we.
I don't recall ever.
We're troopers.
I saw your truck, yeah.
We just need to put up.
As someone that went to school here in Berry, we never close.
Counselor Hammer?
Thanks, Mayor. Steve, I had a question about the, um, the org chart that you sent out. What, what changed on that?
I just, notation of vacancies, new, new employees, Bill hired three new employees. Two vacancies were noted in police that I'm aware of.
Okay.
And it's just, I mean, I try to send it out quarterly, update it quarterly and send it out. Jody is the one who manages the update, but send it out quarterly just so you have a current handle on what staffing looks like. And, and, and names and relationships and in terms of departments.
Thank you. And I was curious on the, the Wheelock tour, are, are we gonna be able to see like the, the rooms where the mechanicals are?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, Jeff will certainly open up the building, but my recollection is it's, there may be electrical panels upstairs, then the boiler downstairs.
Yeah, there's two entrances into the basement, stairwell and a, a open area, so.
But, but the interior should be totally open, accessible upstairs first or basement.
Thank you so much for organizing that.
Anything else for visitors and communications? Hearing and seeing none, we will note that this is old business for appointments, for consideration, interaction. We actually only have one position left for the housing task force, and we have two people that are applying. Homelessness, thank you. I did that again, didn't I?
That's why.
And, but one of the applicants actually has either homelessness task force or dog park. So if we can, can we hear from both individuals first and then take action after? So Bernadette, I see your hand is up. Did you have?
I'm sorry, I'm not so quick sometimes. I just wanted to say thank you, Mr. Mayor. And remind everybody that February is Black History Month, African American History Month. And that we all might want to take a moment and watch a film made by the African diaspora or visit a website. I grew up with the Clemmons family who operate the Clemmons Family Farm in Charlotte. And people might want to take a look at their, at their website. And it's just a time for us to become familiar with something that has been hidden in our history books. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, item AA number one is Chip Castle. Chip, do you want to come on up? So Chip, if you can, just introduce yourself and tell us a little bit of your interest in the homelessness task force.
Okay, take this off just while I speak.
Yep.
Well, thank you for inviting me. Actually, it was Joe Alsworth who suggested that I put an application in for this. So, um, so I'm the director of the Berry Housing Authority. Most of you know that. Since 2005, before that, I ran the council on aging. Originally from Rutland, been up in the Berry area since 1979 or so. I'm very interested in the homelessness issue. It's one of those things that, you know, to me has no, no real answer. And I say that in, in that if you ask 50 people what causes homelessness, homelessness, you'll probably get 50 answers. It's such an individualized thing that I have seen, at least from the housing authority. We house homeless people. It's not a priority. We don't have that as a, you know, a hierarchy. If you're homeless, you get in first. But we treat homeless folks just like we treat everybody else. We screen them. If there's any issues with, you know, drugs or alcohol or stuff like that, we'll deny them and then call them in for hearings. People get two sets of hearings with us, an informal and a formal. So, I mean, since I've been there, I know, I don't think we count them, you know, specifically. But I know we've housed lots of folks coming from the shelter or the streets. I think, you know, one of the problems I see, one of the things I think would be a great solution would be if HUD would allow us to put out leases where people are held to their support services or whatever their issues may be. We can't do that. Just for the heck of it, I sent an email off to HUD the other day, knowing I would make it here tonight, like I didn't last week. And no, you can't do that. You can't restrict any applications in both public housing and section eight. And you can't tailor a lease to that. Project based vouchers, you can. I'm finding out more and more, like the thing that we're working on with Downstreet, you know, the old Ward Five School, that one, we're gonna be project basing vouchers there. And Downstreet would be the manager of the program. We're just an administrator, basically. On that one, there could be provisions like that, which I think is an interesting little twist to this thing. Because, you know, people with mental health issues, substance abuse issues, and I'm not saying all of them, but in my experience, a number of them, once they're in public housing, they fire everybody. You know, so you're not gonna have your mental health worker, you're not gonna have your whatever. And I'm on my own and that's where I'm gonna be. And, you know, in those cases, if there were some kind of a clause in a, in a lease, it would have helped. I think the last thing we or anybody wants to do is evict a person, you know, that has been homeless. And now you're homeless again, thanks to the housing authority. You know, these, these are really, really difficult issues. You picked a good one for your task force. That's, that's all I can say roundabout, right?
Counsel, any questions?
May I ask a non-related question?
If it's about the housing authority, we should probably save that for another day.
Okay.
You need email, I'll, I'll see you after the meeting.
Thanks.
And if not, the, the questions that are usually asked, so you know when the homelessness task force meets and you're able to meet the commitments.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, well, since we do have two applicants, thank you, and we'll wait for the appointments until after. Thank you.
Thanks.
So counsel, item AA two, this is Candace Gale. And Candace, I see that you're here remotely. And you're muted.
You'd think after two years of COVID that I wouldn't double mute myself anymore, but unfortunately, it happens all the time. I apologize, I have COVID, so I'm actually in the car, taking this meeting unless I would be there in person. So can I just give you a quick background of myself and where I come from and why this is an important subject to me?
Yes, please do.
Okay, so I, my family has been in Berry and Colchester for six generations. My grandparents just passed, so I actually just came from DC working in finance to move up here with my husband and my son to take over their properties so that we can keep them in the family. And homelessness for me and my family has affected me on both sides. I've lost two aunts to both substance abuse, which then led to homelessness, which then led to children being taken away. And neither of them were able to come back from it, unfortunately. We were able to save one of my cousins from homelessness and, and abuse. And I, and I say drug abuse and mental abuse or disabilities because I find that a lot of the times they come hand in hand and that there's not a lot of support in the community to really help people rehabilitate from these situations. And that's kind of been the saddest thing that I've seen so far. I just, the compassion isn't there. And that's why I really wanted to be a part of this task force, to bring back that compassion and figure out ways to not only house homeless people, but also to find them the right tools to rehabilitate them back into society, whether that be counseling, just listening to people, finding them, you know, job work programs. So, because I, it's hard for me to see these people struggling on a daily basis. And a lot of people just kind of pushing them to the side because we have so many other things to worry about or it's out of sight, out of mind. And in my generation especially, you know, we're, we're very compassionate to it and we want to try to help the problem as much as we can. Now, I might not have the experience as you all do, but I know I have the heart for it and a very fast learner. I manage 300 advisors for Truist Financial, which is actually SunTrust and BBNT just merged. I've been doing that for 13 years. So I problem solve on a daily basis, but I would just love to put that skillset towards helping in any way I can to solve this problem here.
And you also have on here that you're also interested in the dog park committee?
Yeah, um, yeah, that, the dog park committee was more of a fun thing. I, I love animals. I love dogs. And I have one myself and my son and I always go and play there, so we always go play in the dog park. So we, we just love animals, but, so those were my two choices when I selected, if there, if I could be part of these task forces to help.
Sure, so we do have our dark dog park committee, one of the, the members, I would call you co-chairs since it's the two of you.
Very treasurer.
So do you have any? Do you have any questions that you have for Candace?
Um, no, so you love animals. It's kind of ironic that you were interested in the homeless task force because we have a bit of an issue at the dog park with an encampment nearby. But I will tell you that it's just the chairman, Jeff, and myself. And we currently are not meeting because there's only been the two of us, so. So I can't ask you, you know, if you're available when we have the meetings. But with another member, we would definitely start the meetings back up, so.
Yeah, that would be great. I mean, I work from home. I work remotely. And my son is in school during the day, so my schedule is very flexible, which is good for either task force. I just, we just moved up here in May, and so I just wanted to start being part of the community and see if there's any of my skillsets that can help in any way possible.
Yeah, I mean, we had some projects that we wanted to get done. It's ironic that Bill's here tonight. Uh, because some, some involved some, just some filling of area that gets quite soggy. But yeah, we will definitely exchange information.
Okay, that sounds great, yeah. Absolutely.
Does counsel have any questions for Candace on either of the committees? Does Counsel have any questions for Candace on either of the committees?
Thank you.
Okay, hearing and seeing none. So Counsel, since we do have two applicants for one open position.
Well, I'm checking the membership list of the task force right now on the city webpage. And there is one member who is still on this list who has not attended the meeting in many months, nor has communicated with either the chair or I, to my knowledge. So.
So if we can.
Seems as if there would be two vacancies, not right this minute, but
But of
Potentially in like seven to 14 days.
Okay, so Counsel, if, if we can use this opportunity for one of those, discuss it in executive session to see if there's any action that we should take. It might be one where we hold off on appointments until we find out if that person is going to be here or not. It might be a non-issue, but.
Yeah, and I can, and I would feel much more comfortable explaining to the council in executive session as well.
Okay. So if that's fine with Counsel, we'll just hold the appointments until then and we'll notify both of you at the end, after that, that period.
Okay, that sounds perfect to me.
Yeah. Any questions for us, Candace? I just wanted to make sure before we.
Sure. Can you just give me a little bit of a background on what exactly the homelessness task force does on, you know, during the meetings and, and, and just kind of a summer, brief summary about how you're, you're tackling the problem currently?
Sure. And since we do have the co-chairs here. Counsel Wazin, Zach, did you want to start or Counsel Reel?
I'll defer to Erica to go over, add Counsel Reel.
Um, certainly. So what we've been working on so far is we have currently started a warming shelter in the basement of the library, which is going very strong. And right now, we are currently compiling a resource list of all of the resources in Berry for folks that are homeless, for service providers, which would include, you know, places where there's hotspots, places where there's free pantries, places where there are showers or places where there's not showers, bathrooms, places where people can go to charge their phones. We actually are meeting tomorrow night. So that's, that's the very nutshell version of what we're doing. We're also compiling a list of trainings that we can do with organizations such as being a good tenant or budgeting. And we're trying to come up with a good solid list. And we're also trying to figure out how we can fund the, the warming shelter, not just for this year, but for next year and to, to keep it going for, for winters.
Sure. And do you guys have sponsorships?
Um, not right now, no.
So is that an opportunity?
Uh, it's definitely an opportunity where we could probably use your expertise. So yeah. Okay, awesome. Yeah. So that's a nutshell version.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah, I come from business and marketing and finance, so that's somewhere where I could, I can help. I can help for sure.
Yeah, so.
People more comfortable. And is there anything that the program does for helping with addiction or mental health issues to kind of get people back on their feet if they're dealing with either of those?
Well, again, that's where our resource list comes in handy because we are working with, you know, we don't, we, uh, you know, we have definitely resources where people can go, but we try to meet people where they're at. So we're not, so, you know, if somebody's looking for resources to get redictions or, I'm sorry, prediction, addiction services or, or mental health services, we can definitely shoot them in that direction, but it's not something that, you know, we're like, oh, you need this, here you go.
No, yeah, yeah, of course. Yeah.
If somebody's asking for it, we'll, we'll know where to send them.
Oh, perfect. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's great.
So since we are going to be dealing with it at the end of the meeting, you're both welcome to stay if you want, but you're welcome to, you know, get onto dinner or, you know, whatever else you had planned for the evening. And we will make sure to follow up with both of you after.
I have a quick question, and this is going to sound very silly, but where, I thought City Hall was next to the, next to the post office? And I have no idea where your actual meetings are attended. Is it at the 6th, 6th North Main Street?
Yep. So we're the Berry Opera Houses. We are right beneath it. And so.
Oh, okay.
And we do just for the, you can participate in the meetings either by coming to City Hall or we do have a virtual option as well.
Well, yeah, of course. I just, um, I, I, I would rather be there in person if I can. So I just wanted to realize, I just wanted to know where it was exactly. I apologize, new to the area.
No problem. Thank you for getting involved as quickly as you have since moving here. So that's a good sign.
Thanks.
Okay. So Counsel, we'll move on then. We are going to new business, item A. This is warrant for 7:15. I'll note now that it is actually 7:34. I have not seen anyone come and go except for Chip that just left the room. But that means that for the second public hearing, I, I believe we're still in order for the proposed charter changes. And it has the clerk's name, but I believe that's because Carol did such a good job of getting the items documented. We, we do have in our email, Carol had sent out the revised items she, as she noted under her report. Those are items that are, are currently being worked on for a warning on the, the articles on the ballot. So.
Yep. So I don't have anything, like you said, I, one of the things I have, I have this list of checklist of steps that have to be followed to get charter changes in front of the legislature. And believe me, they ask for copies of every city council minutes, agendas, everything to make sure that we have followed all the steps. So that's why my name is next to this. I don't have anything to say except that this is the second public hearing, so it's another opportunity for the public to ask any questions or make any comments. Same with the, with the council. Um, there obviously have been no changes since Counsel approved the language in the warning last week.
So since this is a public hearing, is there anyone from the public that has any comments on the proposed charter changes? Hearing and seeing none. Is there anything else from Counsel?
No. No, the mayor will just close the public hearing and the minutes will so reflect and we'll be good to go.
And that is what I'll do now. Okay. Okay, thank you very much, everyone. So then we'll go back to the old business item so that we are back on track. So item 8B, this is the City Hall Old Police Station rearrangement plans. And we have Rick Taft as our HR Director here to speak to those items. And I think Steve, you'll probably chime in as needed throughout the process.
Yeah, I just, maybe just to get it kicked off. So what we have presented to the Counsel, pretty much for information, I don't know that we're looking for a formal approval or not, but it's a programming plan for what, what we've dubbed the rearrangement of City Hall. The primary impetus was to address the vacant space left by the exodus of the police departments, um, whatever it was, 15 years ago. From City Hall to the north end of the new Public Safety Building. As we, we, we've actually been working on this for at least 18 months, if not 24 months. It's a, it's been an iterative, iterative process. And it's been certainly a team effort from the staff because it really involves every department that we have here in City Hall. And it's taken a number of iterations to reconcile, I'll, I'll say competing demands, and I mean that in a, in a positive way, not a negative way, but just spatial, spatial demands, the, as we got into it, it, it grew from just what do we do with the old police station to how can we iterate that project into a more, more efficient, more effective utilization of City Hall. Right now, we have departments where staff are split between two physical locations in the building, some upstairs, some downstairs, some at different ends of the building. So just for operational efficiencies, supervisory efficiencies, it makes sense to get everybody into the same common area. And so the project has morphed somewhat from what the original catalyst was. And we've worked through those, like I said, the competing demands and have come up with a plan that every, as far as the staff is concerned, everybody's on board with it. And I think with, with all due respect, the staff has the best understanding of the utilization of, of the, the space in City Hall. In addition to trying to meet staff demands, the other, other issues that we tried to address is improve public service, where customers can come and perhaps get serviced in one area rather than having to go to two or three different offices to do different things. That mostly involves the clerk's office, delinquent taxes and so on. And also, yeah, there's another point. Oh, yeah. It, it addresses one of the chronic audit complaints that we have in terms of having multiple places where cash is collected. Right now, it's, it's in, care of, correct me if I'm wrong, but in the delinquent tax collector's office as well as the city clerk's office by merging, or by bringing the delinquent tax collector into the clerk's space, if you will, it, it addresses that problem. So it's intended to be a comprehensive program to address a number of roles that we have. And with that overview, I'll let Rick walk you through the details.
So Counsel Booton, I see your hands up, but can it wait until after Ricky gives the presentation? Okay.
Yeah.
So thank you, Steve, Mr. Mayor, Counsel. So Steve did a great job basically explaining what we've done to this point. Some of the things that we took into consideration were the number of staff in each department because the space is limited. This is a historic building, so there are certain walls we cannot touch, cannot take down. We have fire breaks between this area here, the backside of the building. There are no windows on the backside of the building, so taking that into consideration for what could be used out there for space and how would we utilize that space? What staff typically is in the office eight hours a day, where what staff is not. So myself being HR and IT, but if we get an IT person, you know, we could be anywhere during the day. We're not necessarily tied to a space like the clerk's office or the planning and zoning office. But the big piece was, as Steve mentioned, trying to get all of the business functions that our customers would come in for, our residents would come in for on the main floor of this building. So when, when a resident comes into the building, they would have the clerk's office, the treasurer's office, water sewer collections, water department, sewer department, DPW, planning and permitting, and manager's office, all would be on this one floor. We're currently, you know, like Steve said, delinquent tax is down this end and Carol's team is down that end. So they go down there to pay a bill, they're late, they get sent down this end of the hall. Five out of 10 times, they'll walk into the manager's office because they don't take the left and then go around because they think that's an exit. And so we're trying to make it so it's more streamlined, more user-friendly for the residents when they come in. But at the same time, trying to get staff with their, with their supervisors. There's other aspects that play into this. ADA compliance is one of the big ones. We have counters in planning and zoning has counters, the clerk's office has counters, DPW have counters. None of those right now are ADA compliant. They're too high. And so somebody in a wheelchair could not be physically at those counters at the level that they're required to be at. We're, we're looking at every aspect of what we need to do to get us to where we need to be moving forward. That includes bathrooms. The bathrooms here, they're not ADA compliant. You know, we've, we've put in this beautiful elevator that gets people up to this floor. But if it's a gentleman, now he's got to go back, get in the elevator, go down to the basement. Around the hallways, the, the doors don't automatically open. You know, there's no way for them to open the door without getting their wheelchair against it and trying to pull the door open to get in to use the bathroom, which once they get in there, it's not ADA compliant. So that's one piece. The other piece is security. As the Counsel's aware, the laptop that we use for Counsel was stolen right out of Counsel Chambers last week or the week before. I've been asked by the police department, do we have any cameras? No, we don't. We've got one camera on the front of the building that was, Counselor Maury at the time, had gotten it as a, as a test to see if we could use it going forward in other buildings, other locations. But one of the things, our offices are open. Anybody can walk in. We want to keep that open feeling, but yet have a sense of security for the staff and the ability to secure a space if we need to. If we have somebody that is potentially coming in that's hostile, we need to be able to secure a location. And right now, we don't have that ability and still be able to provide customer support. So the, the committee, that all the department heads have been working hard on this project, trying to figure out, and I think, I mean, to Steve's knowledge, I mean, we've moved departments around, well, except for the clerk's office because they have a great big vault. It's kind of hard to move. But we've tried, you know, it's like Domino's. We've moved people all over trying to figure out how we could make this work. And not only were we trying to figure out how to make it work, but we came up with a phased approach. So it moves staff and it disrupts business the least amount possible as we move forward with this. There's no way we could just take all the staff, move them off-site, do a renovation and then bring everybody back because we have to continue to operate on a daily basis. So in addition to doing the floor plan layout, we came up with a phased approach that allowed us to shift people here and there without a lot of movement and then get them into a final place once it's developed. So I, you know, you have the memo. I can, Teddy, I could share the screen. If you want.
Where are you? Oh, I see. Okay, sorry. I was confused.
So as you're sharing the document, are you ready for any questions?
Sure.
Okay. So Counsel Booton, I do see your hand is up.
So I don't really have any questions. I, I'd say basically just a comment. And I think this is really great. You know, this is City Hall staff who are the ones that are constantly dealing with this, with people coming in and out. You know, it, it looks like from, from my perspective, you know, it, it looks far better than what we currently have set up. I, I see that, you know, Bill's coming upstairs, which, which is going to be great. I, I assume Dawn is going downstairs. Correct? Is that what's happening? She's taking his current space? Or Dawn, we're relegating her to the basement.
Yes, so currently.
But, but she doesn't need to see people, right? And, and I'm not.
The dark as much as we can.
You know. We, what?
We're making jokes.
Oh. Well, no, I, I think this is really good. I think you, I, I like the layout. It certainly looks very nice. And I just want to make a comment about that and how you guys are the ones that are, are dealing with this every day. And good job.
You ought to be able to share your screen.
Yeah.
I just want to say that Counsel Hemrick had sent Rick and I a comprehensive list of questions that we got. I was after hours yesterday. I didn't see it until this morning. Rick did see it and he started a draft. We may touch on some of those this evening, but what I'd like to do is prepare a comprehensive written response to those questions and send it back to the entire Counsel. So if, again, we're not looking for approval this evening, but if the discussion, and if we can't get to all the questions in a timely fashion, have no, no problem at all if this just gets continued over to next week's agenda for discussion. And, and maybe a more thorough response to the Counsel's questions.
Counsel Reel?
So I apologize, my video's off. I'm getting unstable. Mark, whenever it's on. I'm definitely glad that, that some of the things are going to be fixed and be more ADA compliant. But I'm also wondering if the, the women's room is also going to be bringing, brought up to compliance as well. That's definitely been a bugaboo for a lot of people. And if the signage is going to be brought up to compliance as also.
So.
Go ahead.
So first, to answer Michael's. So first, to answer Michael's question, yes, currently Dawn and the finance team have been moved offsite to Alumni Hall. We've got that setup up there. They're operating remotely. Took some, some configuring to figure out how we're going to do it with, because of the check signing, Carol asked to sign checks. And rather than making Carol go out and drive up there to sign checks and then come back, we were able to use Log Me In Rescue to make that work. So Carol can do it from her desk here. She can remote into the computer up there sign. And the plan is that in order to kind of do the phased approach, we had to move Dawn's team out. That allowed us to open up that space. That would be the first one that gets the changes. And then the next group would move into there, which currently in the plan is planning and permitting and assessing. So in your answer to your question is yes, Dawn will be in the basement. She's fighting already not to come back down here, but because she doesn't have any real customer interaction with, with the members of the public, it made sense that her team would be on the lower floor. And that's why she would be down there where Bill's team has a lot of interaction with the public. They come in to look at maps. They come in to get questions answered. And then as far as, as your question, Erica, we're planning on looking at every aspect of ADA compliance. So we're going to be looking at, you know, as far down as braille lettering on signage. You know, one of the things that I've been trying to get fixed and changed since I got here, and I know Steve has been working on it too, is you come off from the elevator into the hallway by the opera house and that door, you, you can't open that with a, with a remote button. You have to literally pull the door open. So during the summer, we usually block that door open, which then it becomes an issue with fire code because that door is a fire door and it's not supposed to be blocked open. So there's all these things that we need to address, but the ladies' room, the men's room and, you know, all the counters, ADA compliance is definitely a big piece of this. And I believe, you know, going forward, you know, not only are we mandated to do it, but it's the right thing to do. So in your, in response to your question, Erica, yes, it's all being taken into consideration.
Thank you.
Councillor Hemrick?
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks, Rick. And I'm, I'm really excited by this project because, you know, this is such a gem of a architectural treasure in the city. And, and certainly there have been past modifications that, that haven't, haven't shown as much respect for the historic character of the building or, or the use of materials that aren't easy to maintain, like rolled carpet with, that's with tears and salt stains and versus something that could be more easily maintained. But the thing that.
It's been here since the building was built.
I don't know about that. This is very historic. It's a.
Well, maybe, maybe a couple of years ago.
But the thing that really I, that gives me a little bit of concern is looking at the budget. And, and I think that's where, as a city councillor, I'm concerned that it may not be realistic for the scope of changes that are proposed here in terms of some wall modifications, new counters and, and that's based on my experience talking and looking at other projects. I was just talking with the Virgin's Opera House.
I can't hear.
Can you still hear me now?
Yeah, now I can. It went silent there.
But then, yeah, and they were, they were doing a lobby, small lobby elevator modification that they're estimating to be a million dollars. They put $18,000 in schematic designs and then $50,000 to get construction ready drawings. And I think, and I think to really, you know, do it, do this well. And before tearing, tearing into anything, making sure that there is a budget to make sure that it's done, done, done correctly. So that's, that's what I'd like to learn more about is how much, how have these been costed out? And particularly in the post pandemic market. And who else is going to be at the table as stakeholders in this community resource beyond just department heads? Because boards, commission committees use this, customers use this. And, and it's, it's an important temple of democracy to the broader public as well.
So let me, let me speak to the budget because the, there's the, the $100,000 budget, which some of it's been consumed, a small amount of this has been consumed. But that number was a number off the top of my head that I put into the, I think it's a $1.7 million bond. It was a number to try to be the catalyst to get this project off the ground. Its principle, at least as I envisioned it, it, it was intended to be a combination of being able to hopefully fund the whatever professional planning assistance we need and, and maybe start. I'm, I'm, I wouldn't disagree at all. It's probably not enough to, to, to accomplish whole project. But the other, the other thing is, and the point I was trying to make is the, the, the scale and scope of the project has, has increased since it was first conceived. The, the, the original, original intent was how do we use the vacant police space? That has now grant grown to what is a responsible reprogramming of City Hall for, as I said, staff efficiencies, public service and so on and so forth. So we'll have to, once we get into it, we'll have to define those costs. But before we could do any of that, we really need to have a program. We need to have a plan as to what, what is the objective? There's a, there's, there's a million details to be worked out. This this probably, this could take two years to complete and a phased approach and depending on what the budget is, there.
But, but employees are already being moved around right now?
Well, just finance has gone up to Alumni Hall. And we'll, you know, we've got to sit down and just figure out. We've got to figure out that Rick has defined the phases, but we've got to define the timing and how do we move forward?
So, yeah, I think to get to that question, I don't think Dawn was sitting with her staff previously, correct? So. Dawn was. Dawn was.
Not when she first got here, she wasn't.
When she first got here, she was not. That's correct. So this keeps her with her staff is one of the things. But are you planning any revisions in that space for the time being? So one of the first pieces would be renovations to that space in the clerk's office. And that's to get delinquent tax, which works for Carol, in with Carol. We haven't defined the space yet. We haven't defined what that's going to look like. That's something that Carol and I will be working on. We've also got to figure out the historical components of that office. What can we change? What can't we change? But in order to start moving in that direction, finance moved out. Delinquent tax, once that moves to clerk's office, that will open up that space for a phase of the renovation. That space is not going to be a very expensive renovation because there's not a lot that we're going to be changing in there, maybe knocking down a wall, replacing some carpeting and maybe fixing the ceiling. This, it's not going to be, this piece up here is going to be the expensive piece. Carol's office, because we're going to be putting in walls, we're going to be building like a separate space in there. But moving the staff in there, relocating the staff, you know, running new network cabling down to the new server room that we have, that's not going to be super expensive. But those are two pieces. First, to get delinquent tax with Carol because that's one of the things the auditors wanted us to do for years. And the other piece is that opens up that space. That space is still going to be small for the overall need. So we're trying to make it an open space, open floor plan rather than chopping it up like it is right now with walls. So I think that's what you're saying is phase one, and that's all that's included in that section, segment of the plan. That, that would, yeah, there's the phases as we go through and then it expands upon that. But, you know, it's each piece is tied to another piece. In order to get delinquent tax down to Carol's office, we have to move water and sewer down to Bill's office and then develop the pieces in Carol's office, however that layout looks, rewire what we need to, to get the network up and running, fix what we're going to fix, carpeting, counters and all of that. Then we can move delinquent tax down there. Then that opens up that space and it's, so it's like a, it's a constantly evolving thing as we move through. Councillor Stockwell and then councillor Wazza.
I think it's great to think of the space being redone and made more efficient. That's a wonderful idea. I was wondering if either Norwich or UVM would just offer you a free walkthrough on features of universal design? Just so that another set of eyes says, yep, you could do that, or this would be here's best practice now. Do you think that's?
So I would, I would venture to guess that they would. I know one of the things that, that happened when we started this project is I had a meeting with Steve because we had an architect and what would happen is the architect would come in, they'd ask us what we want to do. We'd give them the floor plan layouts that we wanted. They'd go back, they'd give us the floor plan design, which was what we gave them. And then we would change it. And then we'd have to go back. And it was going to be just, I mean, we were going to spend $100,000 just going back and forth, trying to come up with a ballpark idea of how we wanted to do this because as a department heads worked on this with us, I mean, we've changed this plan at least six or eight times. And so if we had to keep going back to the architect to, to say, okay, we don't want to do that anymore. We want to do this, or that doesn't make sense. We need to do this. We would have to pay the architect every time. And so the thought was let's come up with what we want. And then if we design, if we do an architect like Steve mentioned, or we do a design build firm, whatever we decide to do going forward, however, we decide to proceed with it, which that hasn't been decided yet. At that point, you know, we'll, we'll look for professional services to give us guidance as to what we need to be considered. Councillor Wazza?
Thank you. Um, yeah, first, thank you, Rick, for all the work that you've put into this document. And I understand that this is supposed to be more of a broad document that we're looking at. There's one thing I would like to, and this goes to Steve's comment earlier, but it doesn't have to be now. It doesn't have to be within the next seven days. You know, the city manager was talking about how this project expanded from just how do we better use empty space to, we need security cameras and we need to re-network some things and like this room, yes, we need new carpets, new chairs or at least a polish. Audio equipment, we've heard a lot about audio equipment this year with hybrid meetings. So what I would love to see is maybe a list of what I'll call like building infrastructure, like the networking, the audio equipment, the cameras, et cetera, and a list of like the structural things that we would like to do. Does that, is that something that's possible? Or do you understand what?
I mean, it, it's definitely possible. We're not quite there yet.
Okay.
But I mean, I could definitely, you know, put together a list of, of what I can think of and what I know that we need to do. I mean, it goes from electrical to plumbing to high vac to, you know, network wiring.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it's across the board, depending on what the space is. I mean, some spaces are going to take almost no renovation at all or very little. And some are going to be massive renovations. So it's, it's varied, but I can definitely put together a list on that.
Great. Cause I mean, I think, sorry, Carol, I think we can all agree that like.
I was signaling him.
A hundred grand is definitely not enough for everything the building needs. So it would be like, it would be very helpful for me as we move forward and as we further develop these phases to be able to make those budgeting decisions and to be able to make that, well, you know, Rick says there's a couple of quick projects that we can knock out with 50 grand. So let's do that while we get the funding in place for the long-term overhaul of the audio equipment, et cetera. That would just be super helpful.
There's a lot of, a lot of pieces to it. You know, I know like the department heads, Carol has talked about it. You know, is there historical money that we can use for renovations? Are there other grants? So I know Janet was going to start researching that too. So, you know, it's not like we're not expecting $100,000 to finish this project. I mean, I'm guessing that that front of that building alone just between the, the heating and ventilation. But again, we're looking at alternatives. Instead of going with these big heating ducts and, and massive boiler systems, does it make more sense to go with, you know, geothermal heating or, you know, alternative resources? So we're trying to look at every aspect and trying to make the best decision that's going to carry us forward. You know, instead of planning two years out, we're trying to plan 20 years out or more so that we're not revisiting this in 10 years going, okay, we got to start over again. You know, it, it's, it's a big project and it's one that I, I mean, Lucas and Tom and I believe Michael were working on this before I even started here and I started in 13. Yeah, we, we wanted a paint job at some. I'll put that in there for you.
$101,000.
Well, this was painted in 2012, I think.
But, you know, those are the comments that we normally get are it's, it's dark in here. It's dingy, you know, the panels on the ceiling, things like that. So. I did, I did want to get back to councillor Hemrick's question about other stakeholders. I mean, I'm more than willing to sit down and, and talk with anybody about this. Committees are a big one. One of the pieces is because that whole back area out in this back area here is just, there's no windows. You know, back where my office is and where the, there's a little conference room. The goal is to basically make that one great big room back there with audio visual equipment so that we'd have a second conference room in City Hall because we're constantly running into meetings clashing with each other. Because every committee, every task force wants to meet Monday through Thursday. Nobody wants to meet on Fridays. And so the space is very limited. We also don't have any place for staff to get away from their desk for lunch. So we're asking staff, you either eat at your desk or you leave because there's no place to go. So this would allow staff a place when it's not being used to go in and eat. And for the limited amount of time people are in there, you know, artificial lighting is going to be sufficient. We don't need, you know, big, big windows and all of that. So there's, there's a lot that needs to be worked out. The details now or where we're starting now. So you did have your hand back up councillor.
Yeah, I, it sounds like you've done just a tremendous amount of legwork with staff. And as Steve said, it sounds like 100% of City Hall staff are behind this proposal if, if I'm understanding that right.
Except for maybe Dawn, right? No, Dawn, Dawn does great.
Dawn's like, get me away from these people.
There's no objection here.
It sounds like we're jumping into phase one and I, I, I think it'd just be really helpful to kind of see the sequence of what's the phasing, what's the timing, what's the budget, who's done the estimates? And, and then now that you've kind of really honed in on what are the need, needs and what are the possibilities to move the puzzle pieces around to meet different people's needs? I think it'd just be, it'd be interesting to see, to see that broken down into a project plan. So we know, you know, this could be, this could start at $100,000, but it could easily end up well over a million. And I like to see like the steps to get to the endpoint and particularly when we think about the, the whole facility, buildings and facilities need. So we don't have a list from buildings and facilities of all the capital needs yet. And, you know, we're dropping $30,000 on a roof repair here, another emergency pair there. The pool building needs to be done. It seems like there's still needs up at the auditorium hill. We're talking about a public works facility. It's almost like it's time for a comprehensive buildings and facilities needs assessment to, to kind of guide a longer term strategy. And then, and then to see where does this puzzle piece fit within tremendous need citywide.
And all it takes is money, councillor.
And I would agree, and I would agree 100% on that. So what this was is the 30,000 foot view of where do we think the best fit is for where people need to go? Now gets to the, okay, if we're going to renovate the clerk's office, what do we need in that office that needs to be renovated? And then we could put together a list so that when we give this to a, a design build or we give it to an architect, we can say these are the things that we need to change in this office. One of the, you know, we've got simple things like the window that goes out to the fire escape is it's a historical window. But it's not the correct historical window because it doesn't have the wire mesh in it. And if there's a fire and people are coming down the fire escape, they can fall through, you know, things like that, that we know about, that we're trying to address in this. But also what does the clerk's office need to see as far as renovations go? What does planning and permitting need to see in that office? What does DPW envision the front? So that we can give a detailed spec sheet of what we want so that whoever the architect is or whoever the design build is can give us a really good cost estimate as to what it's going to be. And that's where we're at right now. The only reason Dawn's team moved up there is because the fiber went in. They had desks up there and it was just easy for them to, to transition up there because they knew it was going to happen. It's just a question of when. And so plus they get easy parking.
So I, responding to your question councillor and, and just as Rick is talking about the windows and as councillor Reel speaks about the bathrooms and so on, again, those are, those are elements of a, of a rearrangement that just are, are. Elements of a, of a rearrangement that just are, are well beyond what was originally conceived. And, and I'm not suggesting those aren't legitimate or appropriate. It's just that. The project has taken on a life of its own as we, we now have moved to a critical milestone. I, the, the, the bathrooms. Absolutely. I mean, the first to agree that those need to be renovated. They need to be ADA compliant. My guess is that what we'll, we'll end up with are unisex ADA compliant bathrooms that. Can be utilized by anybody first floor, second floor. So that somebody doesn't have to go downstairs if they're not the right gender or whatever. But those were, those were never considered part of the, the police station renovation. And quite frankly. Those by themselves could be a discreet project. They could be done, um, at, 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 at a point in time when we're ready to do those. I, I think that. What we have now. Is we have a program. We know what the objective is for the utilization of the space. Now we have a document that I think we're, we, the, the team has to decide what the next step is, as you were, as you were asking. I think. A likely next step is to, uh. Solicit and retain some professional advice for scoping out the project, costing it, establishing, uh. A timeframe and, and as I say that, I mean, this is. This is, this is part of the reasons it's taken so long to get here is it's a project that in addition to all the complications of. The logistics and the planning and, and the defining needs, it's, it's, uh, it's being done. In everybody's spare time, particularly Rick's spare time. So, um, of which he has none. So it moves ahead and spits and spurts as we, we can focus time on it. Bring the resources together. So I, you know, I said a minute ago, it could be two years. I mean. It's a function of how, uh, much time we can devote to it, getting the professional help to do it. So we'll, we'll, we'll come back with, I think, a, now that we've got this. Part established and I would like to think the council isn't, is in concurrence with the program objective. Now we'll, we'll have to sit down and, and. And figure out what is the next step. I mean, I think I have a reasonable idea, but. We'll, we'll be back.
I just wanted to give the 90 second, maybe 120 second. Visioning around what's happening in the clerk's office is an example of the kind of. Drilling down that we've gone through, um, with, with our thinking. At the moment, if you walk into the building and need to pay a delinquent. Tax bill, a water bill and license your dog, you have to go to three different windows and write three different checks. So the, the, that's lousy customer service. So our intention is to bring everything into one place. This is something that the auditors have wanted us to do. To do that, we need to move delinquent collections down into the clerk's office. Delinquent collections is a unique. Office in that they deal with people who are, um, in fragile. Dealing with fragile issues. They may be really upset. They may be angry. They may be, so we want to create, uh. A space for them. Right now, our office is very open. Right now, they have a very private space. We want to create a space in the clerk's office that helps. Provide that sense of intimacy, um, of confidentiality in the, in that, those transactions. So that's one of the reasons why we're, we need to take this time. The other thing that we want to do is we want to take advantage of this one spot collection. To put some efficiencies in place with regards to our accounting. At the moment, we have, uh, our, our accounting system is very silo based. The water and sewer collection is handled separately and tax collections are handled separately and other cash collections are handled separately. The software is built to be able to consolidate everything, but currently is not configured that way. So we want to take advantage of being able to do that, which will make our accounting, um, more efficient and the. Less times you have to touch it, the more accurate your work is. So that's another one of the goals that will come out of this. One of my, uh, personal goals is to restore that office to its former glory. Get rid of the old 1970s faux wood paneling that's on the walls. Get rid of the drop ceiling. Get us back up so that we can see the half-rounded windows. Um, you know, and I'm doing some, uh, research in historic preservation grants. So there are a number of things obviously that have, that are going into the, the planning and I'm just one. Office in the building, but it's the same kind of, uh, drilling down that's being done by all the different departments.
So it, it sounds like right now your, your 30,000 foot level is just saying, these are the spaces and where we're looking to have them. And, and that's really the presentation from tonight. And, um, for the other feedback on other groups, I mean, we do have an ADA committee and I'm sure you're going to be able to reach out to them to, to see input from them. We're also have over the next year, we have the ability for everyone to be remote as needed. So if there are times of the year, if you need to have a space that, you know, people can't come into this space for two weeks. That those groups could actually meet remotely if necessary. So I think, you know, the opportunities, uh, the times now, you know, let's get it started. As you noted, uh, it's been an item on our agenda for a long time. Um, and really did, as, as Steve noted, it was just the section over here next to us. And it's expanded because, uh, City Hall has expanded and things have changed and COVID happened and. Um, and we have four new positions in our, our budget. So we, we also need to make sure that we find housing for them too. By housing, I mean, you know, an office and, and that's really just making sure. So as City Hall changes, uh, if this is the layout that you're looking at. That's all been accounted for, correct? All those positions that we're, we're hoping to fill have been worked into this as a goal.
Yes. And, and to. When I mean these things keep changing, we keep looking at this and going back going, okay, now how do we handle this situation? So one of the pieces that I just recently, I don't remember who discussed it, but somebody brought it up. But if we have an interim city manager come in and the city manager's here, where are they gonna sit? You know, the plan was that I was gonna move up to Janet's old office once Janet. Got situated with planning and permitting and assessing and where they're gonna be. But now we need to make sure that space is available for a new city manager coming in that may need that time if there's an overlap. Um, or if there's renovations that have to happen in Steve's office before they can move in there. So. We're constantly looking at all the scenarios, trying to make sure that what we're, the path we're going down doesn't box us in. And that we're able to adapt and it's going to be tight for some of the departments because there's just not a lot of space. And we know that. And so we're trying to make sure that in those instances, we're trying to keep it as open a floor plan as possible. And I hate the term, but cube farms possibly. So people have some sense of privacy, but yet. It's still an open floor plan. Um, we're looking at digitizing records. I mean, you know, we have. Thousands of pages of documents in this building. And it's not just, you know, historic documents in the vault for Carol. I mean, there's. Planning records and permitting and zoning and HR files and, you know, just you name it, we have it. And so we've costed out, you know, what's it gonna cost for us to have these digitized? We're looking at options to that. Could we have an intern come in and help us with it, digitizing these records? So. There's, there's lots of things that we're trying to work through right now and that will all be. In this next phase, which is the details phase, trying to. Figure out exactly what each space is gonna look like so we can move it forward.
Other questions from Council? That's right.
So, so it sounds like tonight we're, um, council's being asked to sign off on the objectives of the project. And then there's gonna be before, uh, construction gets underway. Uh, there's gonna be, um, a follow-up on the phasing and the costing.
Yeah, we gotta figure that out ourselves. But yeah, we're, we're, I mean, we're not, it's not like the staff is trying to.
Well, that's what concerns me is like moving this project forward. Um, and I, you know, with, with not knowing what, what type of check that might. The, the body might be writing for the taxpayers. It worries, it worries me, right? And it worries me in the context of trying to get a public works project built too.
So I don't think it.
I mean, I mean, the, the counselor, that, that's life in City Hall. I mean, we, we're running, you know. Multiple projects at one time. Uh, I mean, when you say, well, we're trying to do this other stuff, that's. Part of. Part of what we're, we, we have to deal with is trying to run multiple initiatives at the same time and they. They, they move ahead and slop as one prior, one project may take priority at a time. I'm not interested in, uh, initiating a project that's going to end up costing a million dollars, uh, in getting there in $50,000 bites. Uh, I'm just as interested in having, uh, a, a real good roadmap, a budget and so on. And that's why I say, I think the next step here. Is probably, uh, to take the, the plan that we've got, uh, and, uh, probably solicit. Professional advice, a professional architect. With a cost estimating and so on. And, and, you know, we gotta deal with HVAC. I mean, there's. That's where a lot of time may be consumed in the, you know, the next six months.
It sounds like there is council, prior council authorization to move forward up to this hundred thousand dollars. And do that, whatever that phase is.
For, and that it may involve. There, there's prior council authorization and voter approval to the extent that. A part of that 1.7, a hundred thousand dollars of that 1.7 million dollar bond. Was a bulleted line item for, for this. I mean, there, there, there's not, uh, it's not like there was a detailed plan or detailed process and support there. And as will likely be the case, we, it will, it will cost more than that hundred thousand dollars, but. A hundred thousand dollars will get us to a point where we can define what that cost will be, uh, try to identify where the funding will come from. There could be residual funds left over in a bond. Uh, so there's. We'll, we'll have to find those funding sources and we always do. But. Still need to get the, we'll need to get the assistance of a, of an architect or a consultant to help.
Yeah. And that's where I think the, to bridge that gap would be is in order for that to occur, that would have to come back before council. So.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, absolutely. It wouldn't engage anybody without council approval.
The, the funding that might, uh, be expended right now is the current moves just to get the audit, uh, pieces underway. Is, is what I'm understanding. That's the, the only move expenses type piece that, that's currently in play.
I mean, I, I, to be honest with you. And I'm not. Trying to be the odd man out here, but I don't, I don't think we've. I don't think we've reached concurrence on just exactly what the next step is and the timing. Uh, I mean, I think the team has to come back together. I mean. Reaching this milestone is, is a huge accomplishment. It's taken a lot of time, a lot of energy and a lot of effort. And we're at the point where we wanted, we wanted to and needed to brief the council. On this project for a number of reasons. Um, trusting that we have. Uh, let's say an honor of the head, the council that, yeah, okay, this looks like a good program. But now go figure out how we get from here to. I don't know if I want to say to the end, but at least move ahead. Uh, I think that, I think that the, the department has to come back together and, and sort through that.
And, and the only last comment I want to make is on, you know, when we do cost out things, if we cost it out this year. We know that five years from now, it's gonna have to be recosted because of the, the differences. And even when, if you want to go out and look at the capital. Plans that are on the website right now, anything that we don't address this year, you're gonna have to put an inflationary amount on and, and that's gonna be that much more in a future year. So. For what we can, we can have the best estimates, but we'll just have to know that that's not something that lasts forever. I, I know I see this at the legislative level. They, they. Say, oh, it only costs a million dollars. Well, that plan is 10 years old now. So that one million dollar plan now has to be adjusted for all the inflation and changes that have happened since. So we'd make sure, we'd have to make sure to do the same thing. So as council, a future council is deciding what project goes first. Those would have to be taken into consideration. Correct. Okay. So again, it doesn't sound like there's any motion that's needed tonight. Um, the outline has been provided for the location of where staff would go. The next steps would be for staff to come back together to, uh, provide what the next phase would be. And if there was anything for. Any services that were to be provided, that's something that the manager, uh, with staff would bring back before council. Yes. Any other last questions?
Thank you, Mary. So there's, there's, so the next step, as I understand it, is there's gonna be hiring, uh, an architectural engineering firm?
I, I think that's likely a, a next step. I, I really would like the opportunity for the department heads to get together, uh, again and. Reach a consensus on how to move ahead. Uh, I don't see us going very far. And, and maybe, you know, maybe not everybody agrees with me, but I don't see us going very far without getting professional help. Which, which would include in, uh. Anything from, uh, developing the. Plans and specs and bid documents to, uh, cost estimating, phasing identification, budgeting. Those sorts of things. And we don't, we don't have the skill set. Or the current expertise in-house to do, uh, budgeting for a project like this. We have to turn to professional.
So, and, and I hate to belabor this point, but when you're talking about a, a plan, uh, you know, it's, you know, plans typically broken out into. Phases, timing, responsibility, budget. Um, this is what we're gonna do first. These are the. We're gonna get estimates, then we're gonna do this phase, then we're gonna estimate, we're gonna do this phase. And so I'm, I, my question is what's, what's the next step for this project?
Well, I tell you, I need to consult with the team. I think the next step is to engage a consultant, an architect. But I, I want to be able to talk with the team and make sure they're on save. Well, I wasn't happy to report back. I mean, I don't know, I don't know the next time that we can meet collectively to speak specifically about this. Is it? It isn't gonna be this week, you know, is it gonna be next week or will it be, uh, three weeks from now? So. What I, what the commitment I'll make to you is that once we decide what we think the next step is, I'm more than happy to come back and brief the council. Say, here, here's how we plan to move forward.
Yeah. And, and just for consideration, there's different types of project plans. Some of them are what they call waterfall. You, you build it all out. It takes a really long time to build it out. Or they have what's called agile, which you take it in that phase approach. So if you're working, uh, section by section. And I, I think that's probably some of what the inputs just needed on of, if you are taking that, uh, bite-sized approach. Is it feasible? Is it something that can be done versus do you need to look at the system as a whole? In order to understand if HVAC is a bit building wide thing, uh, wiring from a server to one room, that's a, a small little project. So I think that those are the, the types of things that you'd want to take a look at when you're, you're discussing these.
Till you open the wall, I'm not.
You should put the shovel on the ground and all. Right. You end up with a big dig with a million dollars that's really have to pay. So, um, it sounds like, right, no action tonight. We'll have more feedback and I, I don't expect it to be. Even in, in the next month, it'll probably be after town meeting before anyone hears back on what the next phase is. So. Okay.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Rick.
Another one of the things that Rick is.
It's interesting, yeah, because our HR director is, uh, doing the facilities.
I thought he was our tech director.
All, all the duties as a son.
It's like a Swiss Army knife.
Person to slash.
Counsel, moving on to item AC, this is the approval of the cover photo of the annual report. We have some items that were included in the packet. There were actually some emails today too, because, um. There was, I think it was even on the very beat last night from, uh, Counselor Real was discussing with others, um, that were there. Some of the different ideas that, that could actually be on the, the annual, uh, report. And. And it says your cover photo, but we also have, uh, recently done the front, the back and the insides. So I just want to make sure those are all up for consideration as we, we talk about this. So is there any recommendations to start off with for the cover photo? Counselor Booton?
Well, um, I'm actually gonna channel someone that's way more smarter than me that made the suggestion that we have. Like the, the children with the masks on in the front. And then the back have, of course, blow up to glow up because that was just really fun for everybody. And that person does know who they are. That, that's much smarter than me.
So this is all up for discussion. So, uh, Counselor Booton gave a suggestion. Is there other suggestions?
I also really, I don't, I don't have an issue with Counselor Booton's suggestions, but I'd also like. I also really, I don't, I don't have an issue with Counselor Booton's suggestions, but I'd also like to get, this is one that I've talked to somebody about. I like the one with the view of downtown from the History Center Tower. That shows like all the red buildings in downtown and the mountains and the leaves and the birds.
Through the pillars.
So I'll be quite frank. The only one I didn't like was the picture of all of us. It just felt very, I, I don't know. It feels self-serving to put us on there. So I, I'm okay with any of the pictures there. I just want blow up to glow up there, be there because of personal reasons.
Very colorful.
And it's fun. And it's very fun. It's very, I, I think it was a really good thing for our community and thank you to Alicia Reba Chuck for doing it. Who lives in Ward too, mind you.
So I hear of the kids playing as the front, the blow up to glow up on the back, the pillars as one of the, either inside of the front or inside of the back. Other suggestions or comments?
Well, I think Teddy was recommending, was that was, Counselor Wasak was recommending the, the pitch, the pitcher from the, the History Center for the front, correct?
Um, yes. And then I was just mumbling out the side of my mouth to the, with the clerk. Um, just if, if we were to use the photo with the children, I would definitely want to get permission from their responsible adults.
Okay. Yeah. So maybe we should just go with the.
History Center.
Maybe we should just.
Maybe.
So I'll take that as the current configuration for, for further comments. So uh, Counsel Real has her hand up first and then Steve.
Yeah, I, I, I actually really like having kids on somewhere in the, in the, in the report, but I didn't even think about having permission from the, you know, parents or guardians, but I agree that if we do, we, we should get the parents or guardians to say it's okay.
So I, I hear pretty much a consensus on those. Those are three or four photos that are available though. Do, and we don't have to have everything covered. Um, it could still be blank on the inside of the, the front cover.
Well, I, I can fill it blank for you. I will be the first to admit I have a bias and the first to admit I don't have a vote, but I think the pool project was a major accomplishment in the, in the fiscal year that's being considered. And I'd like to think that one of the photos would be um, of the pool, of the, of the ones that uh, Jody sent around this afternoon.
Can we do the one of them jumping in?
Well, if that's the case, I have to not vote because I'm an. But so if we have, I'm just gonna do general consensus again. So if we say the uh, uh, History Center Towers is the front. Um, say it's the pool on the inside of the front, the kids playing on the inside of the back and the glow up on the outside of the back.
Sounds fine.
Okay. And, and of course, then the disclaimer is we know that if we cannot get the um, sign off from the parents of the children, do we want to have a backup for that photo?
Do we know who those kids?
Yeah, that's, I mean, the ones that, the ones in, in front of youth triumphant, I don't think we, there are no faces shown.
No, no, I.
One of about two, it's the two kids playing with the bubbles.
To be honest with you, as time is coming down to the wire, I, I, I don't know how we would find out the names of those kids.
Well, it, these are um, time specific. That's the only reason I would say.
Well, I, I will, I'll regretfully ask that we'll just move on without the cute kids photo.
Uh, well, if we can, I would say yes, but if we can, do you want to just use the gazebo picture instead?
Yeah. So I mean, like if we, I mean, so I, I mean, I can volunteer to just ask Shannon if she knows who those kids are.
That would help.
Okay. Yeah. I'll just, I'll, so, okay. And I'll just follow up with you tomorrow, Steve.
So uh, the pillars is the front cover. Pool is the inside of front cover. Inside front cover pool.
The kids playing inside of back.
Inside back.
Alternative would be the gazebo if can't get that signed off on. And then the uh.
I feel like I'm missing the pictures from the pool and I, and I feel terrible about that. I'm looking through my emails and I'm not seeing it.
I didn't see it either, but I was.
They came out today.
Yeah. I don't know if Jody actually sent them to everybody or not. And I, again, I'm not gonna vote on which picture of the pool, but I, I think with the uh manager's point, um, it was a large infrastructure project that was completed during that fiscal year. Um, and something that was utilized the following year quite tremendously. So. And I'd say then leave the discretion on which photo up to the clerk to decide. Or Jody, or whoever. Up to staff.
Three of us take a vote.
It's gotta be the ones have been jumping it. That's the most active one.
Do we need a motion?
Sure. Let's close it out.
So moved. What Lucas just said.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Counsel Booton, I see your hand is up.
No, although I'm not entirely sure what we're making the motion and, but I'm just gonna go with it.
I'll just reiterate so everybody is aware. So the front cover will be the pillars. I'm calling it, it's the view from the History Center. The inside will be a picture of the pool. The back cover uh on the inside will be the kids unless we can't get a disclaimer to have the children's face. Uh, and then it will be the gazebo picture and then the very back cover. So when you turn it uh face down, it will be the blow up to glow up picture. Okay. I know I just told Michael right there. So. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed nay? Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on, we are now at item nine B. This is the staff presentation of the strategic planning consultants, uh, the shortlist. In council, you had those items. I think that was a separate email from the manager. Uh, and it had the top three and the recommendation for council.
So, so maybe I'll just.
I'm gonna open this up to that one.
I see the staff has dwindled. It's just me. I, I, I thought Bill might be here or whatever, who pretty much uh worked hard with Carol and Janet and doing the screening and evaluation. But um, we, we're, we proceeded as a council, um, I think concurred with my recommendation of whatever it was a month or so ago that the, the staff would screen, uh, set up a screening process, screen the eleven proposals and go back with a recommendation of, of three. Uh, and, and by virtue of the scoring is essentially uh a top recommendation. But it's not like we're looking for any action tonight. This is really uh the opportunity to formally present uh the results of that process to council. Then it give you uh the time you need to uh review the top three um and uh come back with uh, and make a decision and, and whether, whether you want a week to do that or two weeks to do that. I mean, it's up to the council.
Well, to be honest with you, I, that's one thing I do for a living is review RFPs and uh score based on the RFP. And before even looking at what the staff had recommended, that was my choice. So I thought you did a, a good evaluation of it. Um, the main thing that was a selling point for me was the outcomes base of the strategic plan and how they listed that out versus the other uh bids that were provided. A, a lot of times you, uh, all you're presented with is uh fluffy statements. And there's really no detail on what is the outcome uh in the timeframe that those uh are to be achieved. And I think that that one consultant uh outlined more of the detail of how that would be proposed. And I think that's what this council would be looking for.
Sorry, just to clarify, you're talking about the field partners, the, the one, the, the big.
File partners, fewer file. I'm not sure.
I think it's pronounced file.
Yeah. Uh, was the top scored.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. That's right. I mean, I personally, I'm not ready to vote on anything about this tonight, but I, that's just me though.
Yeah, no. And if council's not ready, I, I'll just let you know that, you know, I'm, I'm fine with the staff's recommendation. And if you need time, we can put this on for next week to.
I'm fine with staff's recommendation too, and this would be below the procurement threshold where staff could do this without council. So.
Well, we certainly, but, but the, but the, the significance of the whatever, we certainly want to make sure. I would look for a formal vote whenever you're ready to just uh concur with the staff recommendation if that's the motion you want to make. And I, and I'm not looking for that tonight. It could certainly be next week if that's adequate time for you.
Yeah, even for me, at least personally, just one week would be fine. I just haven't gotten a reading over the document yet and I'd just like to do that.
I'll put it back on the agenda under old business next week.
I don't see anyone opposed. So that's fine with me.
Thank you.
Um, since it is still on the agenda, the only other thing I wanted to note with this is uh, you know, there's a lot of information out there on smart goals, specific, measurable, achievable, uh, realistic and timely. And you know, our, our priorities that we've been working on have really just been a list, right? We haven't got to that level. Um, we did try to go through a strategic planning exercise, which uh, you know, we weren't at the, that point yet. And we, I think the outside facilitator is what is needed. Um, I have been through a process recently that was not an outside facilitator and it did work well. Um, that was for the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. But we had a lot of the information already in an outline that was presented from a previous strategic plan. And I think that's why there's a big difference here. Uh, we need to have at least that, that baseline document. So that uh, if a future council wants to change items, fine, you know, it's not like it's set in stone, but at least you have a base to work from. And, and I think that's what the important part is to, to recommend.
If you remember right, with Bill Fraser and uh Niedermeyer, what's her first name?
Cameron.
Cameron, Cameron. I was gonna say Carolyn, but Cameron, when they were here, um, they had indicated that they had retained a consultant to, to develop the original one. And then they, they have gotten to a point where they can review it internally, the council and the staff can review it internally uh annually after that. So that's, I think that's parallel to what you were just saying.
Yeah, totally it is. Um, once we have that base, then I think anyone that's in the manager's position would be able to take that document and adjust it as necessary. Council would be able to take that document, review the priorities. And if there are certain, some people call them tasks, but basically it's the, the actual item, like what we were talking about tonight for redevelop city hall. You know, that's a really nice statement, but what does that really mean? What is the detail? And that task gets broken out to the subtasks and then dollar amounts assigned in a timeframe. So we gotta get that higher level piece in place first and then um, future councils can work on those task level items to see what is the most uh important and work on those from there.
I think from my perspective, uh, I think the thing to keep in mind is it's, it's a, it's a joint document between the council and the staff. Um, I, I would anticipate the council ultimately has to formally approve whatever comes out of the process. But it's intended to be, at least in my mind, uh, a joint working document. The staff and council uh have common objectives, common goals, common understanding of uh, uh, roles and responsibilities and so on. Uh, so that it's not exclusive to the council, it's not exclusive to the staff. It's a good working document to help forge the path ahead.
Any other comments or, okay, we won't belabor that one either. Um, so it is now moving on to item nine C. This is authorized FY twenty-three Semper Bond Fund allocation to, it says V Y C C. Um, council is listed that way mainly in part because that was the organization that was originally receiving uh, I believe seventy-five hundred dollars in our budget. And at our budget session, we had discussed excluding it from the budget, but using the Semper Bond funds as a funding source. And really it was for River Access. So it was a more broader scope. Uh, so rather than just allocating it to one organization, I think Counsel Hammer, you mentioned about trying to leverage other grant opportunities that are out there. Um, and there's a, a Better Places Grant that's currently out there that uh, it would use crowdsourcing, but I think we could still uh, be able to funnel through that crowdsourcing ability if, if there was something that the future council wants to address along with that River Access group. So the real question is, uh, does council want to authorize uh the FY twenty-three Semper Bond Fund allocation? And I, I believe seventy-five hundred is well within the amount.
Yeah, the, the, um, I'm assuming you're talking about the thirteen thousand that was uh allocated for the community visit.
That we didn't really spend.
We spent just over three, so there's just under ten thousand left available um out of that pocket of money. And then uh, if council wanted to, could look at, um, and this is from the Semper Bond, uh, that's from the, the bequest fund. Um, but then there's also additional capacity in the um, annuity at some point in the future. So.
Right. So this would at least put an earmark for us. And it could be seventy-five hundred up to a little under ten thousand, just to know. Counsel Booton?
That's fine. I, I'll make a motion for that.
I'll second, and then I have a point of discussion.
Sure.
What are other uses for the funds that come up? Or what are traditional uses? I know it's been used for the, to help build a bike path. Are there other things that it's?
The Semper Bond Fund?
Wow.
List is about like this. It was two point five million dollars. It was, it's got projects that were from two thousand dollars to four hundred thousand dollars to a million dollars. So it's. A long list. I can send you a list of the projects.
Yeah, sure. Yeah. And I think uh, some of the more recent items from Semper Bond, um, of course, there's the annuity and uh, there's two different funds. Um, but there's also been uh up at Highgate, there were a performance. I, you're, Carol, you.
That was, that wasn't Semper Bond. That was Brucea.
Brucea, sorry. I don't, scratch that. Carol, send a list of all the items and Bruce is another one that.
You know, it's everything from fifty percent of the cost of nightlights for the football field that's balding to helping pay off the mortgage of the labor hall, to sponsorships for ki- summer camps at the upper house, to playground, updating all the playground equipment at all the city playgrounds, to redoing the roads in the cemetery, to redoing around youth triumphant, to uh, to funding work at the cow pasture and the dog park and the community gardens. And I mean, the, the list is long. And most of it is, was ten to twelve years ago when it was originally allocated. Um, and almost everything is, has been spent or at least completed. Um, the balance of what's available is earmarked for uh the bike path. And then in addition to that, there was another five hundred thousand dollars that was donated specifically for bike path. Five hundred thousand to us, five hundred thousand to Berry Town. Um, and most of that is gone also. And then we get annuity money every year, fifty to sixty thousand dollars every year that um, that the council has made a number of uh sort of ongoing allocations from, um, plus some individual one-time things. So.
There's essentially no restrictions on something you're gonna use it for in Berry City.
The, the. The five hundred thousand was earmarked for bike path. The two point five million dollar bequest was earmarked for anything other than general fund. And there's no earmark on the annuity. And it can specifically go to general fund. So what a previous council did was decided that when we receive it, it'll be booked into the general fund and then be reallocated into its own separate fund for other purposes. So it is not kept in the general fund to offset taxes. It's used for other things. So there's a chunk of it. There's ten thousand a year that's goes to bike path maintenance. There's five thousand a year that goes to maintenance of the street trees on North Main Street. There's, you know, there's different chunks like that. So.
We have a chunk allocated to ultimate operation costs on enterprise.
Yeah.
And we should be getting the next annual installment anytime.
In the next couple of weeks. Yeah.
I, I see a puzzled look on.
Well, I don't want to jump in front of Counselor Wasak, but I did have a, just a question about the annuity. If it's topical. Okay. Yeah. It, it is the annuity. Um, does it, will that expire or is it an endowed annuity?
No, it is, is an endowed annuity from the Vermont Community Foundation.
Okay.
Um, and every year when we get a check from fifty to sixty thousand dollars, I think to myself, how much is the value of the annuity? So.
Maybe one day there'll be a clerk does an annuity.
It was set up to generate at least fifty thousand dollars a year. The only year it didn't was the first year and I think it was like about forty-eight thousand.
Yeah.
Every year since it's been close, I think it's been between fifty-five and sixty-five. I mean, it's performed annually.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, and it was out of that, that we um, that the council allocated the hundred thousand dollars that has um paid for the civic center promoter position. Um, that came out of, out of that fund. Uh, I mean, there've been a number of, of great things because we get that money every year um, that we have an opportunity to uh, to make ongoing investments in like bike path maintenance and the trees and then also one-time things. So. investments in like Bike Path Maintenance and the trees, and then also one-time things, so. I will send around the list.
Yeah, so my question was back, not about the fund, but about the VYCC. So is there, well, I'm sorry to oppose to it either way, but are there like shovel-ready projects that we know about that they would be working on? Or is it more of a whole pattern until the River Access Task Force comes back with recommendations?
So my intent, and since what the motion would read is for River Access, it would be so that that body, the task force, could make recommendations on how it would be used. And if there was an ability for them to have matching funds, then it's not just the seventy-five hundred dollars, it would be at least fifteen thousand toward a project.
Fifteen thousand?
Well, if it's a matching, you know.
Oh, okay, because we've got just under ten that's being allocated.
Correct, so I'm saying if they're looking into projects, which I think they are through the Better Places Grant, yeah, it's a matching grant, so it'd be half from what would be, and it could be more. So I'm just saying the city portion, they could do crowdsourcing to find other funds, which then can be matched up to, I think it's forty thousand dollars. So technically up to eighty, but, you know, just saying from.
Oh, you're talking about that one particular program?
Yeah. So any further discussion?
Sorry, I'm just trying to, yes. So, and then move, I know this is, you won't be joining us after town meeting day, but when we go into next year's budget, is the expectation that there will be another line item in there for an additional like annual allocation of the VYCC? Or is this supposed to be like one-time money?
This is for right now, I think that a future council can decide about the annuity and how they would want that to be allocated. And I think a lot of that can be dependent on what we see for requests that come through the River Access Group. Same thing, we have an inventory of items that we have as a city. They're going to come with an inventory of items that they want to see for River Access. And that's going to be telling on how much they want to spend and where.
Yeah, no, I just, where this started in the budget, I just wanted to make sure I understood whether that was intended to be an annual line item that they're we're using Semper Bond funds for this year, or whether that was just a one-time expense.
Whether that gets restored in the fiscal year twenty-four budget or not, will really be a council decision. I mean, the budget, the budget preparation will start without that in there. It's a question of whether the council feels, with all the other competing demands, just like this year, whether it can be viable or not. But, but I would assume the budget preparation process will not start with that in the budget.
So, and I think more to your question of the annuity piece, the ongoing, if we were to use the Semper Bond funds, it's warranted for just the FY23 allocation, just because that's the starting point. And I don't think that many people on this council have been a part of the conversations on how those funds have been spent. So it would give an opportunity for this council and whoever may be joining it to have those conversations on how future annuities could be spent.
Cool.
Okay, so with that, any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed nay? Okay, thank you very much. We are noting that there will be an executive session for personnel to just discuss the appointments. Do you have anything else for personnel? Okay, so we should be out of here pretty shortly. And with that, I actually should not jinx us. But we are at roundtable, so.
Hi, it's nice meeting you all.
Thanks for coming.
So I'll start on the screen, I see, Councilor Booton, do you have anything for roundtable?
You know what, I'm gonna say thank you to Councilor Reel and Michael Deering the second coming on the Berry Beat last night. It was really good to hear them have a conversation, and I don't like promoting something like that because I think it's a little inappropriate in city council. But I just want to say thank you to the two of them, and it was a lot of fun, we had a lot of fun. Well, I had a lot of fun, I don't know if they had a lot of fun.
Councilor Reel?
Well, I actually am going to say I had a lot of fun on Berry Beat last night. It was definitely different, and, you know, I like different and definitely challenged me, so that was fun and got me on my comfort zone. So it was a lot of fun, I definitely encourage others to go on the Berry Beat and experience that. And I got to see the studio for the first time, so that was a lot of fun. But I'm going to echo what Burns said, and, you know, happy Black History Month, and definitely watch a movie or read a book, read a band book that was written by black authors. And, yeah, I'm going to pass after that.
Thank you. Councilor Hemrick?
Pass.
Councilor Stockwell and Councilor Wazizak?
I'll pass. I also enjoy, I don't know if I said it last week, I also enjoyed going on the Berry Beat, so I'm not passing to be like passive-aggressive here, Michael. I have nothing else to say, you said it so well.
I will just note that this month is also Career and Technical Education Month, so it was something that was proclaimed by the governor. So if you can, just don't think of traditional education, think about those technical education pieces. We do have a new item for the Central Mont Career Center that is being considered. So it all kind of comes together.
That was cryptic, everybody out in the audience is going, what are you talking about?
Well, with the, there's a new oversight that is being proposed for the Central Mont Career Center. They are looking for a new campus. We'll see how that, that's why it's kind of cryptic.
They, they are, they're trying to create their own school district that would have, right now, the Career Center has eighteen sending towns, but only Berry, the Berry Unified Union School District has any control as far as a board or budget or any of that kind of stuff. If they create the Career Center School District, then all of the the sending school districts will be able to participate in the governance and the budgeting. So that's, that's what the intention is.
And my last comment, I just want to thank Steve and Bill, if he was still here. It sounds like those speed signs will be in, it won't be in time for town meeting day, but shortly thereafter, which will be a great improvement.
Here, here.
So with that.
Michael's got his hand up.
Oh.
That was too late.
You know, I wanted to talk about, just make a comment about the Career Center and how it would be similar to our central Vermont Public Safety Authority, which is currently asking for like thirty thousand dollars on our, on our ballot this year. No, fifteen, is it fifteen or thirty? Fifty, fifteen thousand dollars, which we have no control to say yes or no on that, except for voting no. If it passes in Mont Pili, by majority, and it doesn't pass in Berry, that means we still have to pay for it, correct? Isn't that right? I'm pretty sure that's the case. So it would be the similar setup, so if, you know, the Career Center, other communities say you have to pay that, we're subject to that. Just something to think about.
Okay, thank you. So I'm looking for a motion to go for findings for personnel, and it's related to those appointments.
So moved.
Seconded.
Who is seconded, any discussion?
I mean, my standard comment that I don't think we should, but.
Yeah, understood. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed nay?
Nay. So you're going to have to do a roll call, I'm sorry.
Oh, we are?
Yeah.
Wow, we've had consensus all along here. So going through, Councilor Booton, we'll start with you then. Councilor Reel?
Yay.
Councilor Hemrick?
Aye.
Councilor Stockwell?
Aye.
Councilor Wazizak? And I'm an a as well. So then the motion now to go into executive session, and the manager asked to be invited?
Yep.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed nay? Okay, there's no nay that time. Okay, so we'll be in executive session shortly here.
Oh, it's eight fifty, thank you.
So the question is, when I get home, will it be warmer than the?
Yeah.
It's actually pretty good. So I'm looking for a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moving seconded, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed nay? So just as a point of information for everybody, what we were looking at was our policy. And our policy clearly states that if a person has missed four meetings, that they would be, and they've been tried to be contacted by the chair, which has happened, that that person would be considered no longer on the committee. So it means that there are two vacancies for the homelessness task force. So I would entertain any motion for appointments at this time.
So moved. Point both candidates to the committee and additionally to appoint Dale to the Dog Park Committee.
Candace Giel?
Yeah.
So I would second that.
A motion is made and seconded to note two applications for the homelessness task force, one for Dog Park Committee. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Hey, there is no, that's the consensus, that's all of us, so we don't have to do a roll call. Thank you very much, I do not believe there's any other action.
Lucas, who's off the committee?
The person.
Oh, yeah, I think that's.
No, do you want to list?
Yes, sorry, Dave, the individual who's been removed is Carrie Kelly.
Carrie Kelly?
Yes.
Okay.
So if there's no further action, look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you very much, we are adjourned. Have a good night, everybody.
Good night, Eric.
Good night, everybody.
Bye, Dave.